Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's City Council meeting and Committee of the Whole meeting. The City Council meeting is called to order. We kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll.
Bowring?
Aye.
Furnish?
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kocarag? Malakie?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Palmquist?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Ryaniki?
Aye.
We begin our City Council meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would like to invite our nominee for City Treasurer, Ms. Emily Rosen, to please lead us in the pledge. And with Grace's assistance as well, and of course Derek.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, in the business of liberty, justice, and moral.
Thank you very much. Under Item 3, Public Hearings, Special Items and Presentations, we have 3A, which is to consider the mayor's appointment of Emily Rosen as City Treasurer. All of you have just met Ms. Rosen. I will entertain a motion, and just for the record, the council has in their packets Ms. Rosen's application. That application, of course, is also posted on the city's website. Is there a motion to approve? Alderperson Bowring? Seconded by Malakie? City clerk, please take the roll.
Bowring?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Malakie?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Palmquist?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Ryaniki?
Aye.
Congratulations, unanimous. Life is good. Do you want to introduce yourself as well for anyone's benefit? Or does Grace want to speak? I know she has a lot to say. No? Are you ready to take the oath?
Sure.
Okay. I will come down to you. And this is your sign after. If you'd like to join along, you're more than welcome to listen. Of course, you as well. Follow me, this room. And I kindly ask that you raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Aye.
State your name.
Aye, I'm Emily Rosen.
Having been duly appointed to the Office of Treasurer in the City of Geneva.
Have been duly appointed to the...
Office of Treasurer.
Office of Treasurer.
By the City of Geneva.
In the City of Geneva.
County of Kane, F. Orset.
County of Kane, F. Orset.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I also support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The City of Geneva's Code of Ordinances.
The City of Geneva's Code of Ordinances.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I'll faithfully discharge the duties.
Of Treasurer.
Of Treasurer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
You have one document, a few assignments, your social security number, and social checking accounts.
Head number checking accounts there.
Same here.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Grace is going to be in third grade. I think we might be at the "that ain't cool" level now. I don't know. Grace is going to attend Williamsburg Elementary School, third grade. Life is good. All of you noticed in Ms. Rosen's application, she works for a company that's headquartered in Japan, but obviously works remotely. Travels once a week to Japan. You can take the city jet. Thank you again, and welcome, welcome. And I know if you need to sneak out, Grace, just wink to your parents and you can get out, okay?
All right. Thank you.
I don't think she likes me.
Wait. Don't take it personal.
Okay, good. Now, we have the pleasure of meeting this guy in the back. Many of you have already met this gentleman. He's our administrative analyst, Joe Vizo. Joe, come on up. Now, Joe, you've been on board for almost a year.
Yes.
So, I think many of you probably recognize Joe. He does not only extraordinary work downstairs in the front office area, but has also provided and prepared many presentations that we've all benefited from.
I recognize everybody's names from the mailboxes downstairs. Familiar with your guys' last names.
Now, Joe, St. Edward High School.
Uh, yeah.
In Elgin.
In Elgin, yep.
That's pretty cool, man.
The Green Wave.
I didn't know they were the Green Wave.
Yeah.
Did you know that?
Yes, I did.
What college is called the Green Wave?
Tulsa.
No.
No?
Tulane.
Tulane, oh. We just had somebody here. Your historic preservation planner is a graduate of Tulane.
Oh, I did not know that. Emily?
Yeah, she's about six feet from you, so you should probably go over there and say hi. North Central, excuse me, Elgin Community College for two years, then off to North Central College in beautiful Naperville, majoring in communications and broadcasting. Here's where it gets cool. Northern Illinois University, Masters of Public Administration. I did radio in college. Was it for the college station?
Yeah, for North Central, that is.
Did you have your own show?
I did. I did a specialty show from 8:00 to 10:00 p.m. where we would just talk about movies and TV shows. That was just basically just kind of reviewing stuff on there.
Okay.
You know, being in college, stealing your friend's Netflix account, you got a lot of free time on your hands to review stuff.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
It's called Bar.
Yeah, it's called Bar, yeah. It's called... Because you're a movie junkie.
Uh, yeah.
Favorite movie of all time?
So, I usually give two answers to this because one's going to make me sound like a complete snob, and the other one, everybody will go, "Oh, I know that movie." My favorite movie is M. from 1931, directed by Fritz Lang. It's a black and white movie, foreign film too.
M.
M, yeah.
What language is it filmed in?
German.
German?
Yeah.
Interesting.
But for the one, for everybody that looks at me confused, like, never heard of that, Back to the Future. I just think it's a perfect movie.
Seriously?
Yeah, I just think it's a perfect movie.
Really? You know where all the mistakes were made and all that good stuff?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, isn't that something?
Yeah.
Who's your favorite character?
Oh, Marty.
No, in M.
Oh.
No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding you.
Also Marty.
Also Marty. You're a percussionist in band and jazz band.
Yeah.
Do you still play?
Oh, from time to time, yeah.
You have your own set?
Yes.
Who's your favorite percussionist?
Uh...
I believe, is it Buddy Rich? Wasn't he a percussionist?
Yeah, he is.
You ever see him?
If I had to choose one, though...
You don't know who that is, do you?
No, he was a jazz...
Okay, got it.
Yeah. If I had to choose one, the drummer of Rush was always one of my favorites, Neil Pert, I believe is his last name. And I just thought his kit was incredible, that it goes all the way around him and everything. So, that was one that I always looked up to in terms of just rock music, but just, you know, just being a drummer in general. But Buddy is also another good one to look at as well.
So, you still play?
From time to time, yeah.
Just for fun, or are you playing in a band?
No, just for fun. When I was in school, it was for band and jazz band and everything, but for now, it's just recreational purposes. My friend is in a band, and I volunteered to sub in if he ever needs to drum.
And what's the name of the band?
The Omni Tones.
The Omni Tones?
Yes.
That's a tossback.
Yeah.
Wow. Played baseball growing up and currently play in an adult recreation softball league.
Yes.
Where?
Elgin.
You play in the new fields at the sports complex?
Yes, yes, we do, yeah.
Those things are top-notch.
Yeah, they are. Even the BMX trail where all the bikes go down, that's always fun to watch while you're waiting for a game to start too, so...
Now, I'm going to guess, second base?
Shortstop.
Shortstop, so you got a nice arm?
Yeah.
Is this... Are you right-handed?
Yeah. Want me to throw something to the show?
Well, it depends how the meeting goes. No kidding. Did you play ball at North Central?
No, I didn't. I did it in, I did it in high school, but when I got to college, it was just, you know, I was working part-time at ECC.
Oh, yes, too much.
And then when I went to North Central, being part of the radio station ate up a lot of time because I ended up being part of the big staff there, eventually becoming the manager of the station, the student manager.
Oh, well, you didn't say that.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
And you saw sadly, sadly, who just passed away from WKRP?
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah.
What was her name?
I don't know.
Oh, forget it.
But I did see the headline.
Lonnie Anderson.
There you go, yeah.
From WKRP in Cincinnati. Did you ever watch that show?
Yeah, I saw the North Central, WNC is the radio station there, and I followed their Facebook page. I did see the article get shared and everything.
So, what was your radio name?
We didn't, they didn't allow us to have DJ names, so we just went by our normal names.
Yeah, but that's a cool, your name's cool, though.
Yeah, Joe, I mean, it's all right.
Not that name, your last name. It's cool, man.
Well, actually, my, the show that I did, I called it Variety Vizo, since we did movies, TV shows, and we talked about a whole, music even sometimes, too, we'd do like album reviews, so...
Previously worked DePage County?
Yep.
What role?
I was the multimedia specialist.
Of course you were.
I joined in 2019 there, when I got my communications degree, and it was in October of that year.
Oh.
And when 2020 rolled around, I was like quickly just thrown into the deep end to make PSAs for almost all the departments there and work with the county board to like get word out there on like, you know, stopping the spread of the coronavirus and everything.
Sure, sure.
It also allowed me to work with other departments throughout, even like building and zoning, just like to help get like information out, like if people had to submit stuff, how does that all work? It felt really rewarding to like help the community and everything like that, and that's what eventually led to me pursuing the Masters at...
Is that right?
Yeah.
Well, that's really cool, man. Wheaton Park District?
Yep.
What role there? Same?
Yeah, marketing and communications.
Okay.
I would run the events as well, any of their concerts, their 5K runs, and a few...
So, you were the voice of all those?
Yeah, basically, yeah.
What's your tagline?
I don't have one.
So, you have no DJ name, no tagline? And the village of Lyle?
Yep.
Beautiful community.
Yes, it is.
Very nice. Now, this is what strikes me as interesting, Joe. Are you looking at your notes?
I am.
He's got notes on his notes, yeah. I'm going to see if I can trip you up then, see if there's something not in there. Hobbies include working out?
Yeah.
Okay. Film buff?
Yep.
We already heard about that. Traveling. Explain.
I like to travel to a lot of places. One thing that I'm doing currently with my dad is we'll pick a college that, like a football team we wanted to go see.
Ah.
Like last year, we went to Iowa for the Hawkeyes. This year, we're going up to Columbus for the Buckeyes.
I wouldn't tell the Iowa friends you're going to see Ohio State.
Yeah. My dad's a Michigan fan, so he's not a big fan of them either.
Oh, there you go, there you go.
So, we just basically pick a college right now in the Midwest, and then once he retires, the plan is to just go elsewhere, and like, you know, go to places like Texas for the Longhorns, or even California for like the Trojans, stuff like that.
No kidding.
Miami for, I meant Miami, Florida Gators, stuff like that. But other places I like to go to, I mean, like, I love going to Austin, Texas, that's like one of my favorite places I've ever been to. I love the food out there, the live music.
You have friends in Austin that you can hang out with?
I used to. Actually, I helped my friend move out there one year, and then...
And no longer calls you.
Two months later, we went back out there to go see him, and he got laid off because of COVID.
Oh, dear.
And it was just like, yeah.
Did you show him your PSAs?
No.
Okay. You like the Chicago Bears?
Yes, I do.
Now, I can only infer from this, you love the Chicago Bears.
Yes, I put "the Bears."
Yes, you did.
There's an emphasis on that.
And I guess the question is why?
Uh, just city loyalty.
Is that right?
And, you know, my dad passing his trauma on to me of being a Bears fan and just being subjected to that.
There's no reference to baseball here, though.
Uh, yeah, so I'm also a White Sox fan.
Okay, well, there's only a few.
Yeah.
Who else is a White Sox fan? And now you just made our treasurer leave when you said that. It's like, good night, guys.
I don't blame her, I've seen the records.
Are the Bears going to move to Arlington Heights?
I hope so, it'd be nice.
You think it's a done deal?
Who knows? Every time I think it's a done deal, like, they'll say something else.
Yeah. It's either Arlington Heights...
Or Lakeside, I think, right?
Or Elburne.
Or Elburne, okay.
Yeah, that's new.
Oh. That's interesting.
It's new to Elburne, too, yeah. It's new to Elburne, too. Maple Park. Now, Joe, this, I'm almost worried to reference this.
Yeah, I don't know why I put this one on here.
Yeah, I was going to ask you about that, because...
We can just strike that from the record.
Oh, heck no, baby.
Okay, all right.
You're an avid concert goer.
Yeah.
What kind of music?
Rock music, um...
Like, define rock music, because that's a whole broad genre, so...
Well, my favorite band's the Foo Fighters, but I also enjoy...
Maybe.
I also enjoy like vintage era rock as well, like, I would have loved to see the Rolling Stones when they were coming back around and they went to Soldier Field.
They were in their 70s?
Yeah, like, I would have loved to have seen them.
I did see, the most recent band I saw... I know, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I know, I know, I know. It's just like, I don't, they had that big reunion tour, and I was like, I really want to go to that, but tickets were like $1,000 and everything.
Oh, God, imagine.
I was fortunate enough to see AC/DC at Soldier Field this past...
Hold on, I've never heard a sentence, "We're fortunate enough to see AC/DC," in the same sentence.
Well, I thought like they were just done, like, because I know the lead singer lost his hearing, and so like he stepped down to like, you know, from doing music and everything, but I guess just over time, things got better, and they were recently at Soldier Field back in May, and I was fortunate enough to go see them.
Oh, no kidding.
And that was really cool experience.
Now, are you watching the drummer the whole time?
Uh, from time, like, most of the time when I'm at like a concert, my friends will look at me like I'm a dork, because I'd be like, "That was such a good drum fill," like, you know, I'll just feel like just commenting that to myself or something.
Do you ever go to the Carpenters concerts?
No, I have not, no.
Yeah, they're really good. Do you know who the Carpenters are?
No.
Alderperson Palmquist? Alderperson Palmquist, do you know? That is my type, I like that stuff. Yes.
She's a drummer.
Yes, she is, she's an accomplished drummer, Karen Carpenter, look her up.
Okay.
Accomplished drummer.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. In fact, Jeff used to do backup singing for the Carpenters.
Oh.
You like cooking?
Yes.
Now, you said here you'd like to learn from Gordon Ramsay recipes.
Yeah.
I had to ask our clerk who Gordon Ramsay was.
Are you, really?
She described him as, quote, "an angry Englishman."
That is, that's like, that's very much the perfect description.
Does he yell at the food or the TV, or...
I think everything. I think he'll just yell at anyone or anything.
Oh, no kidding. So, what's your, what's your, what's your specialty?
Uh, I'm really good at making his beef Wellington.
Really?
Yeah, it's probably my favorite dish to make from his. I do it around the holidays always, just because I think it's a perfect holiday dish with like incorporating mushrooms, chestnuts, you know, it kind of gives like a nice Christmas feel to it and everything.
Will he be bringing in a sample this year?
Maybe.
And, okay, roller coaster junkie?
Yeah.
How did this come about?
Traveling, when I was really young, I went to like, you know, theme parks and everything, Universal, Cedar Point.
Kings Island?
I still need to go there.
Yeah, you have to go to Kings Island, that's...
Yeah. That, I just fell in love with going on roller coasters. I used to be like insanely afraid of them.
Mm-hmm.
If, there's a movie called Final Destination 3.
Oh, yes.
If you're familiar with the Final Destination movies, people die in horrific rays.
We all are, of course, sure. Charming movie.
Yeah, oh, yeah. That one focuses on people on a roller coaster, and I won't go any further than that if you're afraid of roller coasters. So, yeah, I basically was used to be scared, and then I got over the fear, and ever since then, I just love going on roller coasters, and like, I'll go on them multiple times like in a row, over and over again.
So, you're kind of a weird guy.
Yeah, I guess so, yeah.
Okay, yeah. Have you been to the one in Vegas that, on top of the...
No, I have not done that yet, no.
That's incredible.
There is one at Cedar Point that's similar to that.
Yes.
Where it literally stops, and then it attaches itself to the track, and that one I need to go and try out because that's brand new, and I want to see how that is.
And what was the famous, the famous roller coaster in Chicago? Riverview, very good, yeah. My parents used to talk about Riverview all the time.
The Bob's.
Way back when.
The Bob's.
The Bob's?
The Bob's.
The Bob's. It's our city attorney, he doesn't really know what he's talking about. I just... Bob's. So, Joe, what else about you, man? You've been here for a while.
Yeah.
You're doing great work, I know you're enjoying yourself.
Yeah. No, you often see how I'm doing and everything, you pop in and say hi, and then...
And Joe knows the code of the front door.
That's good to know.
That is good, that obviously. They don't give that out to many people.
No, I do, yeah. I also can buzz people in through the front door as well.
I know, isn't that impressive?
Which is only given to one person here, and that's me.
And we're so delighted you're with us tonight, too.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
Yeah, and the floor is open. Any comments or questions for Joe? Please, fire away. Yes, Alderperson Malakie?
Um, just to show how old-school I am, is I wake up with an actual clock radio still.
Oh, yeah.
Not in my phone, and the radio station's 89.1, so...
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Nice. That's always great to hear. It's like actually hearing other people who like are not in Naperville and are this far away, like, I'm like really shocked to hear like people actually tuning in, it makes me...
I knew what it was, actually.
What's up?
I never knew what that station was.
Oh, yeah, no commercials, by the way, so if you ever want to just listen to pure rock with no commercials, tune into that station.
All the time?
Pretty much.
Really?
Yeah, and then from 10:00 to midnight, I think, is what it was, right? They do vintage rock, so they'll do stuff just exclusively from 60s, 70s, and I think now they're starting to incorporate 80s as well.
Oh, wow. That's always nice to know, the 80s and 90s are princess, yeah. Well, Joe, we're going to miss you, but thank you for being here tonight.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, and again, keep up the great work.
Thanks.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You got the voice, man.
Oh, yeah, thanks.
Notice how he sticks around for the rest of the meeting? Isn't that nice? Number four, folks, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item 5 is the omnibus agenda. All items on this agenda marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council. Those items can be considered and voted upon with one motion. Pashke makes the motion. It's seconded by Palmquist. City clerk, please take the roll.
Pashke?
Aye.
Ryaniki?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Malakie?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Palmquist?
Aye. The omnibus agenda has been approved with eight affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and two alderpersons absent. We jump to item 6 is done, 7, 8, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Municipal bills for payment total $4,343,096.41. Mayor, I move that we pay the bills as read, the individual items for which can be found in tonight's City Council packet, which is on the city's website.
Alderperson Bowring makes the motion to approve the bills as presented, which are available in each council member's packet and on the city's website. Is there a second to the alderperson's motion? There is. Alderperson Mayor, roll call, please.
Bowring?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Malakie?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Palmquist?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Ryaniki?
Aye.
Eight votes in the affirmative, zero votes in the negative, two alderpersons absent. The bills have been approved for payment. We jump to number 11, folks, public comment. Anyone joining us this evening who wishes to share with us some information or ask us any questions? It's your chance to speak, our chance to listen. Mr. Olsson, welcome.
Just wanted to remind everybody that we have the Festival of Vine and the Flavor Fair that is coming up. That is, oh, heck, where are the dates on that again?
Five and six.
Thank you.
Five through seven, actually, yeah.
I had all my notes for tonight's meeting.
Should have had Joe make notes for you.
Somewhere in my office, and I can't find them. I spent all day out at the Geneva Community Chess Golf Outing. Fantastic time, one of the best outings they've had in years. Great numbers, wonderful time, but I can't find my notes for anything. Anyway, our hours for the Flavor Fair is going to be noon to 10:00 on Friday and Saturday, and noon to 4:30 on Sunday, so should be a great time for all, and as always, we're always in need of volunteers, so if anybody has some free time or an inkling, please reach out to the chamber, and we will plug you in where needed. Second, just want to thank the community for its support. As you all may recall, on the 31st of July, we did a fundraiser to benefit the Joe Bradenton Scholarship Foundation, and between the donation that Stockham's put in, additional donations and monies raised, we are going to be donating $885.68 to the foundation, so we thank the community for its support and members of the council that support it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else joining us this evening? If not, we'll jump to new business. The council has the floor. Is there any new business anyone wishes to share? I will happily entertain a motion to adjourn the City Council meeting. Motion by Pashke. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are adjourned. We'll take just a brief moment to switch over to the Committee of the Whole, being chaired by Alderperson Bowring.
All right, it is my pleasure to call this evening's Committee of the Whole to order. I am Alderperson Anna Ace Bowring. I have the pleasure of representing Geneva's First Ward, along with my counterpart, Alderperson Malakie. Let the record show that all alderpersons are present, save Alderperson Furnish and Alderperson Kocarag. All right, so our first order of business is item 2, to approve Committee of the Whole minutes from August 4, 2025. Do I have a motion?
Seven.
Alderperson Pashke has motion, Alderperson Mayor with the second. We can just do voice vote?
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous, or, sorry, any opposed? All right, now it's unanimous. Moving on to items of business, so 3A, consider draft resolution authorizing acceptance of the 2025 Employee Benefit Plan renewal effective November 1, 2025. Do I have a motion?
No.
Pashke with the motion.
Second.
Mayor with the second. Do you have an introduction for us? Assistant City Administrator McCready?
You've got it. Yes. Item before you is the annual renewal of the city's employee benefit plan for coverages which renew on November 1, 2025. The city's benefit plan includes HMO, PPO, PPO, and a high deductible plan, as well as HMO and PPO dental options. The city also offers voluntary vision plan and provides life insurance at no cost to employees. Working with our brokers, we are, we were able to obtain a favorable renewal at 6.83% this year. This renewal includes no increase to the dental plans and no increases to the standard life or vision plans. And then again, joining us tonight here in the audience, we have Lauren Newton, city's HR manager, and then Boomer Whipple from Assured Partners. If there's any questions.
Do we have any questions or comments from the council? Yes, Alderperson Malakie?
I have a question. A question about whether the insurance policies include a disability benefit? Do they have a disability plan?
That was one of the questions we answered that posted the responses to online today. That is, disability is typically done through the city's pension plans. What we have is accidental death plan.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, hearing none, should we do a voice vote homeless? Okay, do a voice vote when you're ready.
Pashke?
Aye.
Ryaniki?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Malakie?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Palmquist?
Aye.
Let the record show that that was unanimous for all those present. Moving on to item 3B, consider draft resolution authorizing the purchase of fire department personal protective clothing from W.S. Darley &amp; Company in the amount of $38,820. And now I get to correct myself acting. City Administrator McCready, do you have an introduction for us?
Uh, yes.
Oh, sorry, we need a motion.
Second.
Pashke and Mayor? Okay, thank you, everyone.
Now, we'll go. This next item is for the purchase of turnout gear for the fire department. NFPA standards state that the gears can be retired 10 years after the manufacturing date. Approval of this item will allow the department to replace the gear utilizing the source while purchasing cooperative. And I believe we've got our chief and deputy chief here with us tonight, if there's any questions.
Are there any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, hearing none, is a voice vote sufficient?
Yeah.
Yeah, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show, that was unanimous. All right, moving on to item 4, public comment. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment? All right, I am not seeing any. Do we have any new business from the council? All right, moving right along. The next item on our agenda is a closed session on collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or the representatives, 5 ILCS 120/2C2. So, I think anybody, can I take, okay, take a motion on that? Alderperson Malakie?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor. So, nothing will be decided during this closed session, but we do have to ask anybody who is not...